All right, we got five thirty.
Okay.
Craig ran off to the bathroom.
Oh, where are we? Over here.
Glad you're leaving us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the report which stands with the nation under God indivisible.
Roll call.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mahew.
Roosevelt T.
Here.
Brenda Simmons here, Craig Scott.
Here.
Additions or corrections to these, commissioners? Go ahead.
Friends. Son of our former, he has a vacancy. But it's because somebody was on her today, so we need to talk about.
Wow.
Starting a new search.
So, so you don't put that under G?
Sure.
And then, didn't you have something, Commissioner Wilsey?
Oh, yeah, I'd just like to add regarding the transit and the way that we are currently charging our customers.
Transit, uh, under H. Anything else? Uh, three, public comment, is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? And four, appointments, Chelsea Clemens Agricultural Society related to the Fairgrounds grant opportunities. Tim?
Hey, Chelsea stopped in this morning. She was not able to make it tonight, but what she's doing, she's working. I don't really exactly know what her position is with the fair, but working on some capital projects on the fair. I think there was a building project and maybe a couple of others. They would like to apply for a natural resources trust fund grant. The grant won't be, or the application won't be due for a couple of months yet. But they cannot, because they're not a municipality, apply for that grant on their own. And so she wanted to know if the board would be willing to be the so-called sponsor. We apply for the grant as the county, and then they would administer it, do whatever they're would be obligated to do. Uh, including actually completing the, the application itself. So they didn't want to go to the trouble of putting together an application if the county wasn't interested. So that's the question tonight is, would we be willing to sponsor a grant for the fair?
Absolutely. And they're writing the grant, we're, we're just stamping our name to it, correct?
Exactly.
We'd be the fiduciary then, yes.
We would, so we'd set up a fund, just like we do with housing and a few other projects. Uh, they would have to approve their own bills and, and everything else. But yeah, they would, in effect, do the work, we're just holding the money.
So it would be past.
Yes.
I have no problem with that.
No, I think it's great to be, and I hope, I hope they get it.
I've, they, I've heard she's, she's doing a lot of grant writing and searching for the fair board, so. All right, we'll put that on, any, anything else on that, guys? Item five, discussion items, transit committee per diem.
A month ago, I think it was, when we were at the transit committee, the committee asked about that committee, uh, and the potential, they're receiving a per diem for, for meeting. Um, they appeared in, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the committee appeared satisfied with the forty seventy-five combination we have for the half-day, full-day. Uh, but they just wanted to inquire, they're not, you know, they're making demands or anything, but they just felt they would like to ask and they would like to have per diem if the board were agreeable.
Can I add to that, Tim? And I think, uh, I'm pretty sure Commissioner Simmons is staying true to what we had said a while back while we were working on our budget. Um, cause me and Commissioner Simmons are on the committee, I'm the chairman. I'm not looking for the money, I don't believe Commissioner Simmons is either. It's, it's, we have, uh, one, two, three, three other, um, individuals that are asking for this per diem. And they all have done a fantastic job. I'm, I'm really happy where that committee is. We had a great meeting today, and I think Commissioner Simmons agrees. Uh, really good conversations, we're doing a lot of good things. They all, they all put a lot of time into it.
What's the price, what's the cost for the per diem?
Forty dollars for half-day, seventy-five for full. I doubt there will ever be a meeting that goes a full day.
I don't see it.
I think absolutely, it's, it's expensive for people to, to drive. Um, and you want to keep them on the board and keep them interested. Forty bucks is, uh, pretty minimal. You guys are meeting once a, once, are you, once a month, are you, every two weeks, still? Okay.
There's come out a transit budget, right?
Yes.
I don't have problems.
They, one of the members did bring up today the fact possibly being backpaid for the first. I think we, I think we're probably in five, but I think today was our fifth meeting, I think, fifth or sixth.
I don't agree with that.
Well, they've been talking about it since we started to meet, uh.
I say from today forward.
Okay.
Didn't go ahead. Retro happen?
Well, I was just gonna say that. I would want to cross-check with the attorney first before you made the commitment, because there, remember there was some caveat in there when it came to, uh, you know, payment for work that's already been performed. And so I'd just be cautious there, but it could certainly put the question to them if you wanted.
Well, it's not a deal breaker. He did just brought it up today, wondering if there's a possibility. I don't see it being a deal breaker by any means. So start, um, I say, this is December, December, when we start?
From today, they, they.
You had a meeting today, right?
Start today's.
Today.
Okay. So you get paid for today's meeting?
Okay.
Well, we'll have to vote on it next week, right, to make it official that it can happen.
Right.
But we could start with today's meeting.
You guys have a problem with that?
So I'll be just, November sixteenth. Okay.
Oh, I don't have a question. Just have that, make that bold, you know?
Right. Attorney participation in board meetings.
We had a little bit of confusion a couple of meetings ago. We were having conversation, I forget what it was even about. Uh, the attorney was on and, and wanted to, uh, voice a concern or provide some guidance and couldn't get in. Question is for the board, we could work it out with the hand raising or whatever, but, um, are, are you okay with the attorney participating in conversations at board meetings? Uh, and if not, you know, what, what is our alternative? We, we had special circumstances, that meeting Tom wasn't live here, and we were going back and forth with texting and trying to get him in, but the, the question was whether this was okay with the board for them to just simply participate.
I was asked a couple of months ago, I don't remember, I don't recall when, it, it was a couple of months back when something had happened. Um, and I'm under the understanding that when their hand is raised, is when they're able to participate. I guess you're asking if they can participate at any point in time?
I don't exactly know the, the acrobatics they have to go through with the technology to, um, have them participate. I understand there's a designation the attorney can have, so Tom doesn't have to, I don't take down the wall or whatever it is, uh, to allow the participation. Uh, and that really seems to be it. So if the attorney is on mute, he really only has to push the unmute. He doesn't have to have a special, I don't, signal from Tom that allows him to unmute.
So is the hand signal, just so I'm clear, and, and I'm, I, I didn't realize that there was an issue with this. I was asked this, and, um, I, I, again, I thought it was working quite well with the hand raising when we were having a discussion where the attorney was being asked a question, um. So when he raises his hand, Tom's got to allow him in?
Yeah, no, Tom may be listening and, and can.
I don't.
Maybe clarify for, for how that works.
Tom, are you on?
I am here.
Can you, can you add, add insight to this? Cause, please?
Sure. Um, obviously, I don't allow people to speak on Zoom until the board chair calls on them. And the attorneys have been no exception. And, um, I've explained to both of them that they can raise their hand at any time. There's two ways they can go about it. Either they can click on their name and raise their hand, or they can hit, um, there's a toolbar at the bottom to where they can click and raise their hand. And when I, when I, when they raise their hand, I wait for you to call on them. And then I allow people to unmute, is pretty much how it works. I just don't allow anybody on Zoom to interact at any time. Same concept as in, in person. People can't speak until you call on them.
Right, I, I agree with that. You and I talked about this, Tom. I, I didn't think it was an issue whatsoever. I mean, we're, we're running, uh, trying to run these meetings efficiently, effectively. Um, I, I, I think everything that's, that's been going on is, has been, uh, sufficient. Um, I think when we look for attorney insight, um, they've given it to us, but I don't think that there's an issue with, in my opinion, with them raising their hand and being, being called on. I guess, opinions. Commissioner Wilsey.
Um, I mean, I guess, yeah, I haven't known of any problems in the past. I think it is nice if we are talking about something. I mean, that's what their job is for. We're paying them good money. If there's some insight they could give us at that point in time, that could be beneficial to us. I think it'd be great that we hear that. And if we're having problems right now with that communication, then we should fix it. Um, but again, I haven't heard of any problems, but I have no problem with them being able to say, hello, can I inject there? I don't think that's a big deal at all, so.
Right. Go ahead. I disagree, but go ahead, Commissioner Scott.
Well, I, I would think to just instruct them to say, yeah, chair, just ask chair, I, I do that. But if they're seeing something we're doing incorrectly or should not be doing, I'd really like them to be able to say, stop. You may not want to go down this path. They know it, I don't. Um, I hate to finally look up, I don't look up at the screen enough. I don't know how often you're looking up to see if my hand is there raised or not. Um, and then all of a sudden, you know, we say, okay, what is it? Well, a couple of minutes ago, you, you started off on this path here, and I don't think you should have did that. And, you know, I think it.
Yeah, I never look up there, to be honest with you.
I keep a pretty close eye on there. Commissioner Simmons?
Uh, if they recognize to talk, yeah, but, um, Commissioner Scott does have a point also, so I don't go off on a, from a tangent, but I don't like the idea of just interjecting whenever they want.
Correct.
They would have to ask for permission to talk.
Yes.
To address you as Madam Chairman, and then you could.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying.
That's what I would say too.
Commissioner Mahew.
Yeah, I believe that we do enough foolish stuff, we don't need them coming in the middle of the meeting and telling us, hey, you're doing it all wrong. We need a, a deal to tell us afterwards or something else that, hey, it can't be done that way. But we look foolish enough, we don't need help.
So how would you like the attorney to intervene?
So, I mean, I think you should have to wait until, and, and let us know that, hey, can't do that, but not in the middle of a meeting.
Commissioner Simmons?
Well, we already voted on something and pass it. It's a little too late for him to intervene at that point to tell us we messed up.
Well, if we're voting on something, the, and we have any questions, the attorney should have already been, um, brought up to speed on it. If we're to that point already.
So, a couple of meetings, excuse me, a couple of meetings ago, we were talking about the nature part, and I said something that some people disagreed with and thought that I might have said something illegally, violating a HIPAA rule.
Oh, you did.
Remember?
And you did.
Okay, whatever, but I'm saying, if I would have kept going, okay, I would just assume the attorney would be able to say, uh, Madam Chair, stop conversation right now. Because I could have rambled on. Okay, and kept saying these things.
But it wasn't a commissioner meeting, it was?
It wasn't a commissioner meeting.
I thought it was a partial rec meeting.
Oh, it's been right.
I guess again, okay, did the attorney intervene at that point in time? How were you stopped?
No, he didn't. No, he didn't, but I, you know.
So how were you stopped?
Well, Brenda mentioned it.
I called you out, matter of fact.
Yeah, so.
But you messy like.
Yeah, afterwards, afterwards.
You don't want to do that again.
But, but they're not, they, they are only in our regular meetings. On, uh, we've asked them to be here on all our meetings. That's part of the contract, that they, they, they're on Zoom at every one of our regular meetings. They're not always on the committee meetings. Is that correct? Yeah.
Right.
So if they're gonna be there, on there, because we're asking to be on there, I think they should be able to say something. And, and I'm just saying, just like Charlie said, they gotta ask, come in on the conversation, you can't just start talking.
Yeah.
Over tops, they gotta address you, just like.
It's raising that hand, I guess, Tom, is there any, is there any, Tom, what are you doing? I see the cursor moving up there.
So I was pointing out to you guys, you see at the bottom of your screen, anybody can raise their hand at any time, no different than they can in person. It's at the bottom of your screen. All they have to do is hover down and raise their hand, and when the chair calls on them, they can speak. I can let them unmute.
Which is what happens the last time when all of this came about. Um, I, correct, Tom?
That is correct.
Right, so I, again, I, I, that's what's happening. So I, I am shocked that this is on there. I didn't realize that there was an issue. I, I think we definitely have some bigger issues to, uh, talk about, but, um, I, I'm under the understanding that that's what's been happening. The hand's been going up, he was called on. Um, is there any, any other option, Tom?
He could be made a co-host and he could speak at any time, no different than anybody can speak out in person at your meetings.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of that, but I'm only, I guess.
I don't have a problem if he just asks first.
Yeah, as long as he asks, I have no problem.
How's that different than raising his hand? He's asking, and he raises his hand.
Cause if, for some reason, we miss it.
I, it's my job to keep track of that.
No, but you, I mean, isn't that the reason we're having this conversation? Cause it was missed?
Um, I, I was never notified that it was missed. Nobody brought it to my attention.
I don't know. I mean, I agree with you, what you're saying, that we have a lot of other important things. I think we can make this real easy by just saying, if, if they ask the chairperson permission to talk.
I'm asking everybody's opinion. Again, I didn't, I didn't realize that this was gonna.
I gave you my opinion. I think it's simple. I think we should just let them, if they, I'd rather have them be able, in case if we do miss them for some reason, kind of like Commissioner Scott said, I don't feel it's a big deal at all to give them the parameters, so they can just ask for permission to speak. I don't think it's a big deal.
That's your vote, Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, is they have to just, I, I just don't think this is gonna be an exception. I don't think we're gonna hear them asking to, to say something on a regular basis at all. I think it's an insurance policy for us.
Okay, again, I'm in favor of them raising their hand and being called on. Commissioner Mahew? Go ahead, Tom.
Just to clarify, neither attorney knew how to raise their hand on Zoom. I've explained that it to Don and Matt both, how to raise their hand. They didn't know at the time how to raise their hand.
Uh, Matt's hand was raised at the last meeting, so I'm pretty sure he's figured it out. Don, I, I, I couldn't tell you.
Afterwards, yes, I received texts from Tim and messages from Matt on Zoom on how to raise their hand, and I told him how to do it. And then he raised his hand. You called on him, and he expressed his opinion on the jail, um, staffing survey. That's what the issue was about.
Commissioner Mahew? Hand raising or able to speak, pardon me?
It's fine.
Hand raising or just able to speak at any time?
No, raising their hand, doing what they been.
Commissioner Simmons?
Well, that was an issue that they didn't know how to do it, and it hasn't been an issue since then. Now they know how to do it. Just leave it like it is.
Okay, we'll see if there's any more issues. Uh, item C, request for proposals, inmate medical service.
You'd asked at, uh, one of our previous meetings to have a draft drawn up of an RFP, which is what you have in front of you. Um, our current agreement runs through the end of this fiscal year. You do have the authority to terminate that with thirty days' notice, if that's your desire. The, um, blanks that you see really are only three, and, and depending on which direction you want to go with this, it's easily corrected. So right now, I don't have a due date on here. Uh, so that would, you know, depend whether you want to go forward with this now, or if you want to wait a couple of months. Um, we would need to talk about the term of any agreement. This, um, current, uh, RFP that went out was for a three-year agreement, so that's the, what kind of reply we received from two, uh, uh, potential vendors at the time. And then lastly, there is a section in here that sets aside a board meeting date, uh, for people who've made proposals, come in and talk to you about their proposal, allow you to ask questions. So all those would be dependent on what you want to do with this. You know, if you want to issue it right away, if you want to wait a couple of months, um, totally, uh, totally your call. Uh, it is somewhat detailed, just in terms of what is required of the vendors. Um, this is not something new that was created by me, but this is based on a number of other RFPs that I've, uh, viewed from other counties, and I believe meets all the requirements of DOC.
I have a question on here. Um, item C. Uh, if an inmate has prescriptions at home, the nurse shall attempt to have a family member bring the, to the facility. Do they really bring in their home meds? I'm shocked by that.
I've never heard.
Uh, yeah, I can't believe that that's in there.
I, I don't believe they can bring them in, cause you don't know what's in there.
Correct.
The doctor has to prescribe it in the medications after, if they're gonna receive them in-house. I, I don't know why that would be in there.
If an inmate has prescriptions at home, the nurse shall attempt to have a family member, family member bring them to the facility. There, there's no possible way that happens.
It says these medications will be verified by the nurse.
Script them.
By the physician prior to setting them up.
Maybe. So the doctor can review them? With that?
These medications will be verified by the nurse, approved by the physician prior to setting them up for distrib- distribution.
As far as I know, anything that's authorized, the process is the doctor authorizes it in-house, when they get it through the in-house process. So I wonder if they're talking about just bringing your list. This is what I'm at before I invested.
That verbiage is.
Yeah, I, we don't, they don't come with a medicine bag and drop them on.
Why is it say a local pharmacy? You know, is, well, why does it have, all medications must be ordered through the local pharmacy? Is that upon their choice, or is that?
Um, yeah, we don't have to have the word local in there. The key is that it's the pharmacy utilized by the correctional facility. Uh, they don't get to choose.
Okay, I don't disagree. But just the word local, I mean, obviously, we try to stay local, but.
Have a question.
You got a price shop? Yes, ma'am.
We talk about price shopping. What happens if you have an inmate and they get the medications free, free through the VA? And they're mailed to them? Can they mail them to the jail?
They should still get it free through the process that's in place.
Pardon me, please?
They should still get it the same through the process that's in place. That's what I would assume. We can research that as far as a VA member?
Well, if you did it through Meyer, I wouldn't get them for free, I'll tell you.
Well, I.
Cause I don't now, when I get medications from someplace else, even though I could get them through the VA.
That would be a technical question. We'd have to research as far as an inmate that was a veteran that had, so we can look at that if you want an answer down the road.
Okay, well, I don't anticipate that I'm gonna be in your facility.
Tim, you're asking us if we want to put out an RFP now, and this is essentially the proposal, correct?
Right.
Um, I.
We gonna change that one paragraph then?
Cause it expires.
C three.
Fires into this.
Yeah, so.
End of the fiscal year or so, in September thirtieth.
I would like to, just to see if, if we have, if there's anything out there. I mean, it's not gonna cost us anything to, to see, correct?
Well, it doesn't, but you run the risk, if you issue an RFP and then don't award a contract on it, you may have a vendor or two that's reluctant to respond a second time. Um, right now, I would, on my calendar, this would probably go out in April. Uh, we would have about a thirty to forty-five day turnaround, and by June, you would be looking at proposals and weighing which, which way you want to go.
We're in contract to September thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, right?
But we can break contract with no penalty.
Right, pretty deal.
Yeah, after what just happened at the last meeting, I, I mean, that was substantial jump there.
I mean, I think we all agreed at the last meeting, and I think we should move forward and get some prices.
Um, I mean, if we don't go with somebody else, it, it's only gonna be, in my, in my opinion, my opinion would be, would the only reason we wouldn't is if we don't, if there's not anybody close. I mean, if we find somebody close and it's comparing, um, you know, fairly similar contracts.
Close in terms of price or geography?
Price, right.
Price. I don't think geography, right?
Well, the other company was from Tennessee. That, that's why I ask.
Well, that's, they, they do a lot of, but then they may have a local nurse. I mean, the, the doctors te- televised, um, majority of the time anyway. It's not that you're in favor of this, but I think we need to keep everybody honest.
I mean, yeah, I think it's important. I mean, of course, in a perfect world, we, we know we've got the best number we can and the best people in place, and I think loyalty to the county is very important. But it also, I was not happy with the way this all went down. You guys obviously saw my frustration last week. Um, and I know you, you, I believe you said that most likely numbers are, what was that? You had some information from us from last time we went out?
Right.
But still, I think a matter of principle, I think we, I think we should.
Go ahead.
Just for a point of discussion, this, it deals with, so you put it out now, we get price comparisons and everything, and it turns out the current client statement, it isn't reasonable considering another bid that comes out on this one. What do we do with the contract for the budget cycle? The contract's gonna expire September twenty-four. You go offer RFPs again? You rely on what we're putting now? That's my only question, is how does that, how does that play into when the contract expires? Cause you got to reduce something if you don't make a change based on the current one. But, you know, I don't, I just don't want to see us put out two RFPs.
I guess why, if, why would we have to turn around in September and put out another one?
Well, I guess my question is, then, does that put us into a position when the contract expires, now that company's gonna come with their new proposal and get to the new fiscal year?
Fine, but it's just this, there's, there's a couple, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Brian.
There's a couple of ways to approach this. Um, again, the boilerplate would be for a three-year agreement, so the board could determine, you know, we're gonna start this new agreement thirty days from a date certain, which gets you with your current pricing for thirty days. And then on day thirty-one, if you change vendors, then they start for three years. Or this may or may not be palatable to anybody bidding. You, you, you put this out and say, any contract that results from this will start on October one. You could do that too. Now, you don't have to make that decision, even at the RFP process, because you'll be looking at any proposals that come in. You'll have the opportunity to talk with the potential vendors and say, are you okay with waiting until October to start, or are you available to start in thirty days? And you can have that conversation here at the table with the bidder and make your decision then.
If we choose to go with somebody else, obviously, it's gonna be in our favor. Um, I mean, there, there's, as far as if we, if we, uh, changed vendors here. And if it's a three-year contract, we're not gonna have to re-initiate, necessarily re-initiate, look at this for three years.
No, but if you don't do any action on it, my, my question was, what happens when the contract expires at the end of September of next fiscal year? Does, do, are we awarding it? Do you see where I'm going on?
Yeah, but I don't think after, after what happened recently, I don't think it's gonna be an automatic renewal.
That's.
Because they don't wanna incur a large increase and then go back through the exercise again. And we don't want to go through the exercise again. So when this runs out, there's gonna be a brand-new agreement.
Well, yeah, the contract expires, there's gonna be no matter what. But where we cut them, where, where things were cut, from what I seen last week, from where things were cut, they, they got a, what was it, seven percent inflation? I mean, there were so substantial raises there over, uh, increase over the last three years. And now, and now with the liability, I, I seen their point, but just again, how all that came about, I, I, I didn't like. Um, and, and when we originally went with this group, they were supposed to save us a lot of money. And now, looking at it.
No, I, I don't know if I'm not communicating the question correctly or not, but if no action's taken based on the RFP, we still have contract negotiations that's gonna take place if we don't sign a new one based on this RFP.
And then, I guess, then your response, are, are you saying that then it could backfire on us if it?
That's my only question.
If we do RFP and, and they are the, uh, that's, and then come September, when their contract actually expires, they could come back with something that's not in our favor. Is that what you're saying?
Now you're following.
Well, I think that's gonna happen, yes.
I think either way.
I think that's gonna happen anyway, because if we didn't have these increases in this, this, what happened, happened, and we just kept on going, we'd get into about July of twenty-four and say, you know, everything's been going cool for the last three years. Let's just, they could come back to us and say, will you renew if we keep the contract the same? And we'd look back at it and say, yeah, everything's been cool all the way along the line, yeah. We may, we may vote to just renew, but now because of this exercise. We may, we may vote to just renew, but now because of this exercise that happened, both sides. Are now saying. I gotta do something different. They're saying, if we get a big jump, we want something in the contract says that we're. There, something gets absorbed, and we want something in the contract says the same thing.
Well, right, but they also did that big jump, it's been almost three years or two years into their contract now. They did a, was that seven percent increase?
Right, and that was baked into their contract. It said they would see, uh, whatever the CPI was, that's the increase they would receive. Automatic, um, so yes, I, I think it was nine percent, I'm not.
It was a lot.
It was, it was significant.
And I don't remember talking about that, but shame on me, I guess, for not looking at, at, at that, that increase closer. Um, I, I know when all this came about, again, our, our healthcare costs were, were out of control, and this group. Was supposed to save us, so that's why we had looked at a couple of comparisons, and it's, it's not saving us nearly the amount that we thought it would.
Was it nine percent or was it actually even higher than that? I thought I.
Nine percent and then three percent or it was?
I thought it was double digits.
That there were definitely two. Jumps, and this is the third year of it, so both years there was a, an increase. This last year, um. Maybe it was the year, I don't know, one of those years it was in the, the three percent range, like. You know, whatever the CPI was, it was just applied there, so that would get you to your double digits, and the purpose for their, their being here was the. Literally the seventy-five percent increase since they signed the contract and then malpractice insurance. Um, so that, that might be the number you're remembering too, but the, the overall contract, nine percent one year, and I think it was three the other.
This could work against us or it could work for us? Is it worth a gamble? I guess that's the question, right?
Yeah, I, I just want to be clear about.
Commissioners? Scott, yes or no?
Well. We don't do anything, it's just a matter of time, because we're gonna get into July and we're gonna, we're gonna have to talk a new contract. With any somebody. Because we're not gonna, we're not gonna continue with the contract we got, we're not gonna renew it. I think everybody agrees to that, we're not gonna renew the current contract we're going now.
They're gonna want something.
That, you know, they got hit with a big charge and, and they had to come and. Make a deal. And they're not gonna wanna do that again. Know what I mean?
Right, but what's basically.
So, they're not gonna, they're not gonna wanna renew. And we don't wanna renew, so it's, it's either do it now. In, in. The end of this year, we, we wait till the middle of next year, July, and when, when we're on the. Cusp of. Burning over a contract.
So is it now or later?
I'd do it. I'd do it later, I guess.
Later?
Commissioner, what, what's it?
Yeah, so last time we bid this out, how many other outside entities, companies did we, did we receive, uh, estimates from?
Just one other company.
So it's that limited? So there's a chance right now we could do an RFP and we would maybe only get one?
It's possible. Um, I did have, I know, contact with two other companies, they just didn't submit a proposal. So there were four altogether that had contact while, while the process was open.
And they never responded why they didn't submit a proposal or?
Well, some things have changed in our, our jail as well, it's, it's less inmates, um, I, there's more. Jails now, um, so maybe there's more medical. Uh, oh, go ahead.
One option we talked about a few years back was hiring a own nurse. As an employee. Is, is that still an option?
There's complications to, it wouldn't just be a nurse, you still have to have a physician. Right, so I would frankly feel better if we had a complete package contract, so a vendor's gonna take care of all that.
That's, I think that's a good question. I mean, we need to look at everything, um.
That was at one point, the, the nurse was changing or something like that, and the idea was, why don't the county just hire her?
Yeah, well, that's, in effect, what happened, so we just have a contract is all.
Right, she formed a company.
Right.
And then we, we contracted with the company.
She's a nurse that had been there for a substantial period of time.
Tim, would it be beneficial to do a little fishing right now to see? If we can kind of get an idea if there's a number of different companies that were, uh, in this?
It, it's a pretty finite group, I can pretty well identify them pretty easily, um, but, yeah. I mean, I can give you a list, in fact, I usually do that when RFPs are out, I can, uh, maintain a list of everybody who received a copy, and. It's such a limited, um, audience, I can direct email it right to the companies, I don't, and obviously, we'll do the advertising like we would normally do anyway. But it's such a small audience, it's just as easy to put the RFP in their hands and say, here's the deadline.
Commissioner Simmons?
Do that big jump. You know, recently, I, I think we should. Put it out.
Now or later, now?
No.
Mr. Mayhew?
I think we should. Pay him for now and then look. Take care of it for now.
That's what I think.
So you're saying later? We have to make the decision either way. Well, you can't really look without asking for an RFP, I guess, can you? Can you, can you?
If you don't have nothing.
I think that's poor business.
No, if there's nothing, you ain't gonna have nothing.
There's that, but the vendors are gonna want some very detailed information about the facility, and some of them may wanna come and look at the facility and base their bid on what they see.
Yeah, I say now as well. I, I don't think we're out anything.
I think, I think price is gonna go up. Come next year, come next fall, the price is gonna go up, no matter what. They're gonna charge more. And. The other ones charged more before, so that's why we went this way, because it was cheaper, but I just.
We thought it would be cheaper.
Right, but I think it's just gonna go up. It, uh, the total, so if I can pay. A low-high number right now. And until, instead of buying, paying a high-high number. Yeah, I, I go along with Roger, just. Ride it out, and then. Middle of, middle of summer. Long before it runs out. Start the process.
Okay.
Commissioner, what's he, you have the final decision?
I think now. Going out.
Okay. So I guess, do we need that present for resolution?
Uh, no, I just, I, I didn't keep track of.
We have three nows and twos laters.
Well. And we, Commissioner. But Craig has a, he has a good point, you know? Cause everybody is gonna be raising the prices. Because of what the. Inflation was.
But isn't that our job to keep everybody honest?
Yes. It is.
They're honestly gonna be higher.
We don't, we're making an assumption.
Yes, we are.
Just like we made the assumption that they were gonna be cheaper. I mean, I, I get what you're saying, I, I just, we've cut ours, and, and from what I seen last week is where we cut. They came back with pretty much maintaining where they were at with their, their cost increase. They're just no longer covering their liability. That's not our fault that the liability insurance went up, that was not part of the contract.
That's true.
And the chances, the competitor. Would be, come down because of the change in. Population and things like that.
Right, and, and their contract.
There is a chance.
Their contract was that they would pay the liability insurance. I mean, so that, that, we were being gracious last week.
I, I think we've spoken, there's three of us that would like us to go with it now, and that's.
She has. Did you?
Or yes.
Did you change your name?
Change your mind. Did I change my name? No. I haven't changed my name, I'd like to right now, but. No.
Now or later, Brenda? It's Commissioner Simmons, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner David. Madam Chairperson.
Did you say now or later?
Well, we're making assumptions with everything right?
We're not a resolution, and we got a week on this side.
We don't have to, is what you.
I don't need to do a resolution, all I need is.
Making the decision right now, that's why we're still sitting here.
Yeah, let's. Let's go for it.
So now, okay.
So I'm gonna suggest a January thirty-one due date, and we'll have the meeting, one of the county meetings in February, have the vendors in to meet you and talk about their proposals. Sound right?
Yeah, I mean, I think getting through the holidays and giving people adequate time is, is fair. Uh, Road Patrol. Milage language.
Okay, um, you have language, uh, that was presented, actually prepared by the. The attorneys, uh, so we've got all the blanks filled in now with the mileage rates and the amounts, uh. Expected to be, uh, raised in the first year, so this is that second step. We've already, uh, informed the clerk, you know, the intent. You need to settle on language by, um. December date, but, okay, so this, this, this round of meetings to get it to the clerk on time. So the, the question is, are you satisfied with this language? Are you satisfied with the mileage numbers that are in here? And, uh, we go from there.
Uh, do, Brett, do you, can you give again a cost on, uh? This being, uh. Put out there to vote on for February twenty-seventh?
Yeah, the current company that we use, um, said that it would be eight to ten thousand additional for the third ballot. I did, however, two days ago, request. Everything to be broken down. So that. I can. Have a better.
More specific.
Idea, yeah. And he said he was gonna get back to me. He was back in the office today, he was supposed to get back to me today, and I. I'm open tomorrow.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Have we heard from schools yet for May?
No.
Commissioner, or Commissioner Scott?
I think we should drop twenty-four hour. To stay with Road Patrol.
Oh.
This, this, I can, this could be a burden on the sheriff's office. Twenty-four hours, not twenty-two hour, it's not twenty. It's twenty-four, and twenty-four is twenty-four salary.
How?
Just saying. I'm not saying he doesn't have, I'm not saying he has to go less. I'm just saying. Don't put it in there.
How this is, I, how this is submitted, is this a continuation or is this a grant, how this is worded? Is this the same that is current, or is this going to appear as a brand-new millage with different verbiage?
It has verbiage in here referencing the current millage, but also saying, like the headly override, put it back to one mill, which is what was originally voted on. So if, the way this is set up, it would actually be a slight increase from where we are today. Um, let's say by point zero zero one seven mils. Um, put it back to one mil.
I guess why, why, why the increase?
It's just, uh, just like a headly override, it just resets it rather than going through the rollbacks and continuing to compound rollbacks, put it right back at one mil.
And we'll just add a pro-mil.
I know, but with that changes, it's not just a renewal.
Well, there really, there is, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. There is not a renewal. Milling, uh, uh, boat, every new, every boat comes out as a brand-new. Boat, because your dates change. So it's brand-new, I mean, renewal is kind of, uh. Slang. Word for. For doing a, a, a millage again. Is that, am, am I? Somewhat correct?
Well, I would caution against trying to parse this too much. It's been through the attorneys, and, and believe me, they are experts on the wording on these things. Uh, when they say it's, it's okay, then I totally believe it, that the real question it comes down to is, uh, the chair is, uh, asking is, do we. Reset this at the one mil, or do you continue at the point nine ninety-three? Um, that's. Either, either way is fine. You've got the language here that would reset it at one, but you don't have to do that.
The reason I ask that is because these villages are very, very confusing to a, a lot out there. If it's being sold to them that there's the exact same. Then to them that they're comfortable, they're gonna, they're gonna vote yes, it's a renewal, they've been able to afford what they've been paying. If. We, if it's being sold to them that there is just a small, slight increase. That yes could change to a no, because they not understanding.
Right, you see right there in the top line, it says mileage renewal and restoration proposal, uh, so you could go with just a renewal again with. The, checking with the attorneys to make sure, you could just say mileage renewal proposal and drop the restoration. And then it's. Very clean that way. Um, so I guess the wording here, you're really looking at both options, all you need to do is just, uh, cross out the restoration proposal and just not reference the reset to the full mill.
Mr. Simmons?
Oh, so you're saying just go back to what it is right now then?
Right, which is point nine ninety-three.
Yeah, because. If you go raise it, it's not a renewal, it's an increase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the first time we asked for one mil.
Right.
It was headly to roll it back.
Right, so that's where the.
Asked for one mil, they voted to pay one mil.
Okay.
Headly rolled it back.
Okay.
Not the voter.
Okay.
And not us.
Okay.
Agreed, again, it's just all very confusing.
And one mil is a lot easier to understand than point nine nine eight three.
Yeah.
To some of the average layman out there, I'm gonna disagree with you.
I'm still at the twenty-four hour item, oh.
I, I, I guess, yeah, we can go back to that question, um. What's your, I, I guess, Sheriff, you, you, what's your opinion on the word twenty-four hour?
I think I'd leave it there. Um, we're gonna have a night shift for sure, whatever we have to do, we're gonna have it, we'll have, we'll have a car or two in a day. And I, I'd leave the twenty-four there, so.
Okay, go ahead. You're looking at something that lasts years down the road. Today, you got it. You have it all. Three years from now.
Uh, again, I, I agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Scott, but then I, if it doesn't say the word twenty-four, are we gonna be able to sell it? I, I don't have that answer.
That, that's a good question. I think that twenty-four hour. Is a big part of this millage. I think that's what a lot of people wanna hear is the. The twenty-four hours. A day.
But, but I see what you're saying a hundred percent.
I, I also do too, okay.
Mr. Simmons, did you have something else?
Yes, I have a, a question to ask. Shifts.
They're twelve-hour shifts.
Twelve-hour shift. How much do you have on? Each shift, from what time to what time do they go?
From six in the morning till six at night, there's two on. Now that we reduced the numbers, there's two per shift.
Where are you going with this, Commissioner?
Say that one more time.
Two per shift.
Two, uh, two deputies.
Two officers.
And how many do you have? How many officers do you have?
Eight, nine, seven deputies and one sergeant. You have nine.
You have nine?
Lieutenant and a detective.
Now, does this lieutenant go on Road Patrol?
I'm sorry.
Does this lieutenant go on Road Patrol?
He's, he's doing a lot of administration stuff. But he can go out there.
Does he go out there? Does he go out there now?
Primarily no.
No. Lieutenant does not.
There's a lot of, uh, administration stuff that he does.
Okay, uh. What kind, what criteria do you use to, uh, determine if overtime's gonna be necessary or not? Um, I guess what, the reason I'm answering this is. If you have nine officers and that, so that's. Four a day. Do you, do you have two on during the day, two from six AM to six PM?
Correct.
Do you have two cars on or just two officers on?
Two officers with two cars.
Well, you have four on during the day.
No, no, there's one, during the day, there's a deputy in one car, so there's two cars out.
So you really could put just one car out and one car out at night? You could.
Well, the.
That's twenty-four hour.
The coverage wouldn't be no good, because you, we've got complaints all over the county. That one car would be going, be, be shagging one end of the county, when you got another complaint up to the north, you got one to the south. And people are gonna have to wait for that car to show up because they're doubled up in the daytime.
Which you're, I guess.
My, my concern is the overtime.
Is this, okay, this is about the millage right now. Are you in favor of this verbiage on the millage?
Oh, yeah, I don't care, I.
Are you in favor of what this says?
Well, it's, it's not a renewal, so.
Just for perspective, the difference in just the flat renewal at the point nine nine versus one mil, you're talking one thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dollars.
Minimal, again, it's what's gonna be sold to the public.
Just so we all have respect.
Say renewal, cause it'd be still one mil, like it is right now.
Okay.
Still consider renewal. Yeah, okay, yeah, can I add on to Brenda's?
Go ahead.
Understand we're talking about the millage, but I do appreciate the fact that Brenda's asking these questions, cause. We do know that this overtime is a, is an issue, and it could turn into a bigger issue, so I appreciate the fact that what Brenda's asking, this is the time. So I appreciate the fact that what Brenda's asking, this is the time for us to ask these questions and to get this information.
But it was just getting off task from where we were at. This road, this, uh, this road. Millage, in my opinion, going on in February, it gonna cost us eight to ten thousand dollars. Um, I'm not in favor of, I'm in favor of the twenty-four hour road patrol. I think it should be, if this is put on in, let's say, May, will there be a cost?
We don't know yet.
Cause the schools.
We don't know if there's schools.
Cause there's possibly three other times that this village could be put on possibly, that will not cost us any money, correct?
Well, we did, we also gotta look at the logistics of it all because there's a, a very good chance of thinking that the headly. Would, our best bet will be for May. So if we. Have the, uh, have the road patrol in May. And then we have, you know, we still don't have definition comfort, concrete information on all our other villages when we feel we need to do this. That's why I think we still need to have a really good meeting with our stakeholders to get this figured out. We had our EMS meeting today and it got brought up that. Um, Justin, our director feels real strongly, we should ask for an equipment millage, point five. So that's another millage. So we, you know, I really think we need to look at all these. Voter exhaustion's always been, you know, was talked about and. So I, I really feel that that February month, I mean, I know we have a cost there. But I think it would be great to have a, a millage in February. And I think the road patrol millage is, is the one for it. I know the sheriff and the undersheriff, you guys feel the same way, correct? For the February?
Yeah, uh-huh. Go ahead, Commissioner Simon, sorry, Commissioner Scott.
Well, the thing is, is last week we voted to put this on. The question isn't, is it gonna go on in February or not? We voted to put it on in February last week. What we're talking about here is the language of it. We had a deadline, we had to tell the clerk, ask the clerk to put it on, right?
Yes.
And, and now we're talking about, you'd have to go back next week and rescind the motion.
I would not.
What? We've already voted to put this on the millage in February. That was the vote, the resolution last week.
No. That, that it was being turned in because we clarified during the meeting.
And it's, well, it's got, the final to turn it in is five days from now before our next meeting even. So if we don't do it now, it's not gonna happen.
We clarified that at the last meeting. I would have to watch that video and I will tomorrow. We clarified what we voted on last week, which was to turn it into the clerk, but we were gonna work, talk about the verbiage. It was basically to get further, further communication, which is what we're doing right now on the actual verbiage of the village. Doesn't this have to be voted on again next week?
The, the language, if you're gonna proceed, has to be voted on next week.
Okay, so what, what exactly did we vote on last week? Can you clarify?
Notify the clerk of your intention to put the issue on the ballot.
Intention to put it on.
For February.
Okay.
The place a special millage question for authorization of funding. On the twenty-seventh, the February twenty-seventh ballot, I'm looking at it. We didn't change the, the resolution, we passed it.
And it may pass again next week, a-again, after giving it some thought. Um, I, I think it, and, and I'm entitled to my opinion. Um, I think going after something that's, I was hoping that maybe something else would be turned in. That maybe could be split this cost, but possibly costing us eight to ten thousand dollars. Um, when we're already short, yes, this millage needs to pass. I agree with that a hundred percent. Um, but going to add a cost, when we have other options to do it, uh, uh, when there will be no cost. When we're just trying to get it on there in February. For it to pass, which I, I, yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not agreeable to the eight to ten thousand dollars when there's other times.
Well, I, the motion, Commissioner Scott, I think we've already, we voted to move forward with putting this on the February ballot. And again, this was just for the, the verbiage.
That's not how I understand.
Yesterday, the last week was therefore being resolved. The board of commissioners hereby petitions the county clerk. To place the special ballot question for authorization of funding for the sheriff's. Road patrol on the February twenty-seventh, twenty-four ballot. We voted on it and approved it. Now, if you wanna change that, we gotta go officially into it and, and, and make a motion to rescind that.
You're making an assumption. Is that, I, I guess we need to ask the attorneys because we clarified that last week. So please, Tim, go ahead.
I wouldn't have to agree with Commissioner Scott. You'd wanna rescind that motion. You wouldn't want their, their resolution. You wouldn't want that as the only uh, record. Uh, and, and then nothing happens. Now, that being said, if you don't pass this, you know, the language, I mean, that same thing happens. I mean, there's the, the, you missed the deadline with the clerk, you don't get on. But yeah, I would recommend just to keep it clean, uh, rescind the motion or rescind the resolution. Uh, but definitely, um, you know, the attorneys will be on, certainly ask them ahead of time, but they'll be on Tuesday. For clarification as well.
So verbiage on that, are you agreeing, are you, I, are you agreeing, Commissioner Simmons?
Is there any line item and does the sheriff have money to put this on the ballot?
I can't speak for the sheriff's budget. I mean, there's, obviously there's funds in there. Now, the sheriff would want to amend uh, for this, that would be, I would wait for that.
And money be used from a millage?
I thought we clarified that last week as well.
And this wouldn't necessarily be the millage money anyway that you'd be using.
No, it wouldn't be the millage money.
Could be the general fund.
General.
That's doing it, which I assume is what we're doing anyway.
Where are we gonna pull ten thousand dollars from?
That's a very good question. Now, you got a couple of options. You can go to contingency. Uh, you can ask the sheriff to take a look at the non-personnel lines and figure out where you could pull eighteen or ten to eighty thousand from.
What? Was there something, I guess, how, didn't we spend a bunch from the contingency line last week?
Did not. We were gonna use that for the inmate medical, but the decision was to go completely with commissary.
Right, but there was something down the line that we talked about that we did pull from contingency.
I think this question, I think it was the ballot, I said that we'd save the money from and use the connoisseur and we could use contingency.
How much was it this?
I believe so.
I didn't think it was. I thought we asked if you guys had the funding and you said, do you remember the conversation last week?
So I had fifteen thousand left.
Right.
Maybe. We only have twenty-five thousand dollars in contingency now.
Correct, and I know we spent some last week and I don't recall.
No, I, I think it was the uh, the medical for the, and it was gonna come out of commissary. That, that was my understanding. I didn't remember anything else.
Line, cause you, you pointed out the contingency line. Yes, there was a resolution we passed last week.
I think it was.
Was it this?
Possibly pay for this, I'm pretty sure.
But then I thought.
Looking at the resolutions, I don't see, the other spending resolutions had to do with the bus, uh, and uh, uh. FEMA grants, but there was, there were no other, outside of the inmate medical.
What insurance?
That really won't.
Malpractice.
Yeah, and I know they took that out of. And that's the only thing I remember and I put it back.
Right, but there was something down the line, down, and maybe it wasn't specifically. We need to find out, I guess.
It was us.
And the reason we did that, cause there's only twenty-five thousand dollars in contingency and that's why I wanted to come out of the commissary fund.
That'll take us down to fifteen thousand.
Can I, can I make a statement?
Go ahead.
Um, I, I do appreciate the fact that, you know, you're concerned that eight, ten thousand dollars, cause I understand financially where we're at. But we really need to look at like the big picture of this. You know, we've been talking for a couple of months now. We gotta strategize of when this millage is gonna go win. And here, isn't helping the fact that we're still waiting to hear from the schools. That it's really important for us to finalize that information, so we have an idea for the strategy for a few of these villages. But we have a lot of villages. We know the financial situation of the county, of our residents. And we have to be really smart with, with how we're gonna do this. And in February, I feel is a very. Good time for us to get our road patrol millage, which is a very important millage for our county, passed. I understand that comes with a cost, but that cost is really small compared to what we're gonna get. Compared to if we try to put this millage into another millage and we have two or three more villages going on at that time. Then I think we could really run into the fact of voter exhaustion. So I think for eight to ten thousand dollars and feel really comfortable to see this millage pass in February. I really, really strongly feel we need to keep moving this forward.
I, I understand your perspective a hundred percent, but, but again, um. I, I don't disagree, but I don't agree when, when there's other times we put on that doesn't cost. I wish there was other villages on there where this wouldn't cost anything. Um, I, I, I guess, the verbiage, I, I, I think the, the, as far as, as simple as possible. I think people get very confused by, by verbiage and when they get confused, they automatically vote no. Um. You know, I, I don't know if it's February, I, I guess, how many people? What, the last time that there was a, a millage on in February, was there much participation?
Um, nobody can seem to remember when the last time a millage was put on in February.
I don't ever remember.
And I don't remember a year that we had so many questions either.
Yeah. I mean, typically it's, you know, a February millage from the research I've done is gonna be your lowest count of voters.
Is that what you want for this road patrol millage?
I believe so. I believe it will pass. We all get on board, stay consistent with what we're message. But this is a renewal. I mean, it is, it is, it is a renewal, all one mil, point nine, whatever, it's the same thing. It's a renewal millage of our road patrol. People need it, people want it, it's gonna pass. It has to pass. We, we, and I think February is the time to do it.
Mr. Simmons?
What happens if it doesn't pass? Do we just drop it and forget it? No. We run it again?
I would say so.
I wouldn't say so.
Then why don't we just run it after February?
At no cost.
Yeah, no cost.
We got May, we got August.
It's just assumptions we're taking, you know, that, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. You know, if it doesn't pass in February. Now, what do we do?
Well, I'm just very, I'm very confident. We all have our own opinions. I'm very confident it's gonna pass in February. Eight to ten thousand dollars again, is eight to ten thousand dollars. But this, this is well looked at and then it gets this millage checked off the box. A very important millage, that's very important to all of our residents and majority of our residents checked off the box. Now let's focus on our other ones. That's why I feel February is important. Well.
Commissioner Mayhew?
Uh, the people I talk to, working people, they're never, I don't know how they're gonna do. But I can't see wasting ten thousand bucks to find out.
Mr. Scott?
Well, no, I think put it on February, like as we have voted on already. Um, the only, the only thing that I wanna address is a couple of things that. Commissioner Simmons was talking about with, with road patrol and, and the structure of the sheriff's department right now. As the structure stands right now, there's another funding source for the sheriff's office. It's the sheriff's office budget. Okay, that can be shortened. The millage won't be. The millage is a, is a, is a guaranteed source of money for the length of the millage. Okay, but not everything in the sheriff's department. You're asking for a roster right now. Not all the name, not all the people that work in the sheriff's offices underneath this millage.
I just had, how, how many you got on road patrol? That's my question.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is if, if three years from now, you need to cut the sheriff's office budget back. You know, we've already moved some underneath this millage, so those, that's a guarantee. You know, with the cost of automobiles and the cost of fuel and cost of everything else, you know, it's not just people it's paying for.
As a road millage.
Hold on, Commissioner.
Sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Commissioner Simmons?
If the road millage, if the patr- road patrol millage passes, then those people that are working that. Should be pretty set in having their job because it's paid for by the millage.
Right, but I'm saying that all the employees are underneath this millage.
And that's fine, and those are the ones that, there we are.
Okay, all right.
If we have, if you have to make cuts later on, then.
We understand.
It can't be the road patrol.
That's right.
Because of this millage.
Right.
Putting, putting this on in February, if the sheriff and undersheriff are in favor of it, do I think it's a good idea? I think it could a hundred percent backfire. I think going back to the public and, and stating we're putting this millage on, that's gonna cost us eight to ten thousand dollars. When we could have waited three months and, and put it on for free. Um, I think this could definitely backfire. Uh, but they're, they're in favor of it. Um, if we can figure out where the money's gonna come from. Uh, again, I, I think it's a very poor idea, but. Um, I, I.
I have a question, Commissioner.
It's, it's their, it's their department. Um, I think they should ultimately be their decision. Um, I, I hope you put a lot of thought into this.
So last week when we voted to do this, I don't remember you having them comments.
Well, I did ask for some clarification and there was a deadline on it, which had to be before this, this meeting. So I did have some more questions about it and, and I'm gonna go back and watch the video. We did not, as, as far as I was under the understanding and maybe I misunderstood. Um, and that was the first time that it was thought, talked about. So I think that this is a more uh, unfortunate, because the previous committee of the whole uh, meeting did not take place. I didn't feel like there was a lot of conversation on it. Um, and I've talked to some of the public uh, between last week and this week as well. So I, I'm gonna go back and re-watch that. I, I must, I might have misunderstood. Um, I thought it was because we had to have a deadline to get it to the clerk if we do go forward with it. So. Yes.
Your question, that deadline, Breck, this question's for you.
Mm-hmm.
That deadline, does that mean that verbiage has to be to you and approved beyond that ballot by the twenty-first from us?
The wording is December fifth. The twenty-first by four PM is if you're going to be on the ballot.
So we don't have until the next meeting.
No.
We have right now.
No.
Hmm, that's exactly what we have. I just wanna make sure everybody understands that. If it doesn't happen today, it's not gonna happen.
Correct.
We can't vote today. Obviously, obviously it was voted on last week, so.
It was voted on last week, yes it was.
And I'm gonna watch that video because I, I apparently misunderstood. And again, it was, it was the first time it was being talked about. This is a pretty big, this, pretty big uh. I think this should have been definitely, um, I know we've been talking about villages. Um, I know some things have been thrown a whoop around, but um. Hopefully, uh, some strategic planning went into this. Cause I think if this doesn't pass and we spent ten thousand dollars on throwing it, throwing it back on again in May. Um, I guess then we have May, then we have August, and then we have November to try to get it passed. I think is a very poor reflection on us. But.
Well, one thing I do ask is because I feel very clear of the direction that we've had with this. I know you have some confusion. I do ask that if we move forward, we may be a little frustrated with a few things. But it's important for us as commissioners to be solid and united on the fact that, okay, February is our millage. Now let's go out there, let's push for it, let's not push for it. And then in the other breath say, oh, but you know what? I really think this could backfire and then that is the worst type of politics, political BS that can happen.
We're all entitled to.
I, I understand.
This is open, rounded communication. As far as how I talk to uh, the public, I, I guess I'm not really sure where you're headed with that. People go to the voting, they, they need to do their own research, they need to make their own educated decision. Um. I don't think it's my job to persuade people either way.
Okay.
If they ask me questions on a village.
That's okay.
I'm not done yet, I'm not done yet. If they ask me questions, um, hopefully I can provide them adequate information. That I feel is my job.
Okay, all right.
It's not to persuade people.
Okay, all right. And then, so I would appreciate Commissioner Mayhew, as he laughs when I'm talking my statement. Roger, can you explain why you laughed?
Yeah, I can.
Please.
Uh, if I don't vote for the millage, I am not gonna tell somebody else to. I understand, I'm out of working class and I remember what I get.
And I am also.
But. And I am not gonna try and convince somebody to do something that I wouldn't do. And that's it.
I think people need to make their own educated decision.
That's fine, that's fine. I just didn't appreciate the laughter. I appreciate your honesty, but I didn't appreciate the laughter. I appreciate you telling me how you see.
And you tell me all the time that we have to be behind us.
And you tell me all the time that we have to be behind us. I am not. And I I ain't gonna go out and submarine your deal, but I am not gonna. Okay, and and you tell, tell people to do something.
That's fine, I understand that. I'm just asking.
Are you done, Commissioner Wiltie? Are you, are you done? Go ahead, Commissioner Wiltie.
That's, that's all I'm asking. Just don't go out there and submarine the deal. That's all I wanna say it.
And we appreciate being.
So right.
Go ahead.
So right now, we we've already approved it to be on that ballot. In February, that's already been approved.
Tonight is the verbiage.
And tonight. It's December something or other, you have to have the verbiage.
December fifth.
Yeah, so, but last meeting was the last meeting. Before November twenty first that we could vote on this. Or or today, but we don't vote today, so. It's already been.
But it's.
It's already been passed that it's on the ballot for February.
And it was the first time it was brought to directly to us. At the last meeting because of the committee of the whole being, being uh canceled, I I was gone.
Yeah.
So again, I I misunderstood some things, but there was a very limited time that this was discussed. But again, if they're in favor of it, it's their department, and my opinion is their say. So. Commissioner Scott.
As Tim said earlier, if you don't pass the verbiage, then there's nothing to put on the ballot.
Well, the verbiage has to be approved by December fifth, right? Is that correct?
Next week.
Which is next turned in by December fifth.
We have to vote on this on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yes, our meeting is Tuesday, Thanksgiving is Thursday.
Oh, that's right.
Is there anything in there? Is there anything in here you guys would like to change?
I, it was an education for me just as far as the process, the verbiage that came out from the attorneys. Like I said, that was basically based off what was previously on the ballot. Attorneys taught me a few things and made them return, so that's really. This is what came back from the attorneys. I was pretty impressed with the process. That's what you have before you as far as the proposed language.
And you guys agree with everything else? Just go on exactly like it is?
As far as verbiage, yeah.
Okay, and a part of the verbiage is the February. Uh, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Yes, I just wanna hear it.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, state and local cybersecurity grant program.
Well, this turned out to be a lot of nothing here. Um, the Department of Technology Management Budget sent an email out last week. Saying that uh they have several million dollars of grant money available. Uh, we would be uh qualified for cybersecurity plan projects, and this would include cybersecurity assessments, which we've already done. But also incident response, planning and training. Uh, and this is probably something that Mike Bowers would be involved in as well because of the source of the grant funds. Uh, the notice that we received said that they would have the required local consent agreement available to us this week or the week of November thirteenth. Well, we're still in that week, so technically tomorrow is still the week. They have not yet sent the agreement. So we'll hold this for the next Cal meeting. If the agreement comes, we'll talk about it, decide whether or not it's something we're interested in pursuing.
So is there anything you need from us?
Not yet.
Uh, appointment to jury board.
We did have a, an application for a member uh to. Remain on the jury board to continue uh for another term. Uh, since the application that was submitted was put out there just today, we received uh confirmation from Judge Bennett. Uh, because of the uh way the statute is written, the judge actually has to recommend people. So he's provided that for us now in writing as well. So all that being said, uh, if you were agreeable. We would uh put a resolution on for Tuesday to appoint. Uh, Janice Fritz to the jury board, and I believe it's a three-year term.
Six.
Six-year term, right?
Total served to six. She's got all her information on there.
Yeah, I appreciate all the.
Any questions, Commissioners?
No.
Uh, item G vacancy, Breck, can you tell us what's?
Um, yes, no, nothing bad happened. Um, we just, the financial clerk didn't work out with us. So we need to now go back to the drawing board, so I am requesting to be able to hire another person.
Financial clerk, is that the, you tired two, is that one of the last two positions?
It was the first one that we did not get approved last time. Didn't need to get approval last time because.
This prior to?
Prior to, yep.
And, Breck, is this person no longer working and she quit?
Yep, today, yeah, she, she, um, yesterday was her last day. So I am requesting to, to fill that position.
Is there a reason, is there, did, was there a reason it didn't work out? Like, I I guess, was she not satisfied with, with something?
No, we got an email.
I didn't, I didn't, today I didn't see it.
It's in the par, I.
Was it in the par?
Yeah.
Okay, well, it was in the bar then.
Yeah.
She, she did it by text, right?
I guess I can, that's not, that's not what I'm looking for. I guess, is there something that she wasn't getting? I don't mean like this department wise, I mean God wise.
Felt too overwhelmed with job duties for financial clerks, felt like she wasn't catching on and did not want to continue. Last day was yesterday, texted eleven sixteen twenty-three stating this.
Where, where was that sent to us at? Not my email?
On a par form.
It's a par form, I I guess.
The seamless stock.
Oh, I didn't see that, dude, because we've been kind of over flooded with those, so I probably haven't opened all of them. We got a lot in like a week's time. With the layoffs, I I, yes, I started reviewing them and I was like, whoa.
Was that, was that the blonde?
Okay, so nothing's changed, position hasn't changed, wasn't dissatisfied with.
Correct.
Anything that we can change is my question, because there's been a high turnover rate.
No, it was, it's, it was more than she expected.
Okay. Cause there's been a pretty high. Turnover rate, is it?
In the entire county, yes.
Whoa, yeah, this position transferred.
This position transferred.
Transferred. Didn't, we didn't lose the first one.
Right.
Just transferred. Um, I I just like to, uh, let's give, give the consensus here that uh. That she starts a search.
Was there many applicants for that previous one? There wasn't? So do you have a concern with not being able to find an applicant?
Um, as of right now, no.
You think you can.
I do believe, yeah.
I'm trying to help you out here. I'm looking to see if there's something we can help you with.
There, no, the, yes, you can help me by letting me hire somebody.
That's what I was looking for.
And if you guys would allow me to make my girls up to forty hours for at least a month in. The meantime, we would still be saving three thousand dollars. With them adding five hours extra a week. Because um the deadline for election filing is Tuesday, and I have got to put all of my focus. Or the majority of my focus on that. We still have Alicia training and family court. So anytime there's family court, there's two of the clerks out of the office. So I am asking if I can add five more hours a week to the three girls in there. Without having this position filled for at least a month, because we put the notice out, there's gonna be two weeks for that. And they're gonna have to give their two-week notice, that's a month right there, so that's saving the payroll for the one that left. Plus, the benefits that we're saving from not having anybody in that position is three thousand dollars.
Questions or comments, Commissioners, Commissioner Wiltie?
Yeah, question. Um, for how long would you like that extra five hours?
Just till the end of the year.
End of the year.
Mr. Scott.
Yeah, it's just, uh, I know, we'd have to make a vote if we're gonna spend more money. That's gonna require a vote, and we'd have to differ from our format here today. We're gonna vote on anything just to, just to give her our blessing to look for somebody. We don't require a vote for that.
No, that's all we're really doing today, but we could put it on for a resolution for next week if we're going to give them.
Extended hours, it'll have to be next week.
Right.
On Tuesdays.
But yeah, I just.
I'm fine with that.
I wish that we could give her that blessing, that serve.
Yes, Commissioner Simmons.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Mayhew.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
You gotta start the union way first, right?
I will do it the same time.
Intern and posting, okay, okay.
Should do it the same way it was done last time.
Okay.
That was just two, a couple of weeks ago. Transit. I don't know what this is about.
Yeah, it's just, uh, we put this on, we had our meeting day at eleven o'clock, and um, because I think we're in month six of our transit committee meetings. And one of the the biggest things, and Brenda, I know you'll, you'll agree with me here, is from our first meetings with me, you and Ray. Um, one of the biggest issues that Ray said when we asked him, you know, Ray, give us a list of, of the negatives. What are some of the big problems you're experiencing here at the transit? One of, one of the items was, was that our, our transit currently charges per mile. So you may ride from, you know, get picked up at Walmart and you're going to Rose City, and you're, you know, you're paying. Two dollars and thirty-three cents depending where you're at in Rose City. So all of that, it takes time, more time to to calculate, there's more change involved. It gets frustrating for the people, and I guess that's been a problem for years. So we started talking right away, especially when the transit committees started. We said, what? Let's look at doing a set price. Um, not that it matters what the other counties are doing, because, you know, we gotta do what's best for us, but we are the only county in the business still. Um, that does the per mileage, you know, having to do, deal with all the change. So as you can see here, we have it on the iPads, and also Tim, Tim made a copy. It shows uh three different prices. You know, you've got your local West Branch prices. Um, and then you have your, your, your next tier, which we use, call it your second tier, basically. Uh, Rose City, Lupton, north, north and south, and then across left to Clear Lake and up to the northwest quarter of the county. That's the second tier, then our third tier pricing, which, which is pricing, which is our farthest distance, of course. You know, Heath Road out to South Branch, you know, down below, um, Dot Prescott and just east of Prescott, so that would be the third tier. And ultimately, we feel that this will increase the morale of the workers, which is important. But really, what it could also help with too is it, it could help with um even us getting more, more riders. Uh, it just creates consistency. One issue that they have, um, and it's a consistent issue is. For some reason, the mileage reader reads a little different. Well, last time I paid a dollar sixty-eight, now you're charging me a dollar eighty-three. And we understand people's money, it's important, and that upsets them, so we're no longer having those, those problems. So ultimately, we feel that this is the way to go. The, the board feels it's the way to go. Um, Ray needs to talk with M dot to get their approval, and then the other company Ray has to speak with. Is our, our entity that takes care of the billing, which is not a problem, they just, inside the, the system, they have to switch everything over. But we have to make the approval first in order to to move this forward. And we had a soft date of January first, if everything goes to plan between M dot and the system, as long, of course, as long as everyone approves here. But we could try to have this in place. If there's any questions.
I think this is great. Um, now, the, the, the pink area, if I'm looking at, was, was kind of, is kind of my area.
That's our, yeah, farthest distance from. From, I guess, you could, you know, our, our home, which would be, you know, West Branch, heart of West Branch area.
My, my question was, was if, if, say, somebody where I used to work, somebody, i- is it four dollars? Uh, just to verify, let's clarify, I guess, if somebody uh is, is, was being dropped off in my previous o- uh, office. And they're, they're, they fall into the category of an adult, and they're being picked up at Mills Township, but yet they're being dropped off at Mills Township. Is it still, am I understanding that it's four dollars no matter what right there?
No, your, your previous office would be the second tier, uh, three dollars. If there are seniors, senior citizens and disabled would be a dollar fifty, and then children sixteen and under would be a dollar. Uh, basically, that line is um pretty much Sage La- uh, excuse me, Henderson Lake Road into the east is our third tier.
So if they're staying wherever they're saying, so they're saying, we're just gonna say staying in the yellow, if they're staying in the yellow, just, I just, again, I just wanna make sure. I think that this is great, it simplifies everything, but my question again is, if somebody is, is in the yellow and they're being dropped off in the yellow. Is it still that flat rate? Is that what this is telling me?
Correct.
No matter what, just a flat rate? The only thing that I think would simplify that even better, and I'm sure you guys had discussion on this, but um, in the blue there, the, the seventy-five cents, seniors and disabled. Would that be simpler, just being a straight-up buck? Versus having to hand back a quarter? I mean, I, I, I agree with this, I think it's simple.
Yeah, it, it would be the reason that it's at seventy-five is because you can see for all three tiers, basically the seniors and the disabled, there's fifty percent discount. But, um, but yeah, it would be a lot simpler for it to be a dollar, and that's part of the point of what we're getting away from is the change.
Well, my question is, my question is, is this based on everybody outside in the county coming to West Branch on a trip? Is it because out there by, by.
Right, a lot of them.
Your house, they're, this, this trip's taking you all the way there. If, if you're.
That was my question, if they stay in Mills Township and they transfer just to Mills Township, a lot of them come a mile from.
Well, like, if I lived at Sage Lake and I just wanted to go down to Nestor Store.
Right.
Is it supposed to be four dollars to ride down to Nestor?
Three. Three.
You know, the other thing is, is I'm six miles from town. And I, I ride it once in a while. If my car needs to get fixed, I can get a ride home. Um, Roger, you're about six miles from Rose City? Your house is about six miles from Rose City, thereabouts. So if he needs his car fixed in Rose City, it costs him three dollars to ride back and forth to home. It only costs me a buck and a half to go the same amount of miles. But I live in the blue zone, so I get a cheaper ring. See, he's gonna do most of his trading in Rose City because that's where he lives. I'm gonna do.
I understand what you're saying.
I don't think there's any other way to do it, trying to get away from the mile thing. I agree with this to an extent, but I think that seventy-five cents seems to be changed to a buck, but I see what you're saying. It's the same thing, uh, you're right, a lot of the Mills Township people don't travel, um, I shouldn't say, don't travel outside of Mills Township. But I, I, I think this simplifies it, which is what they do need. Is there gonna be a right that's gonna make everybody happy? No?
Well, we know that there's, yeah, there's some people not gonna, you know, some people are gonna have, be a little upset with it, but the majority of people, we feel that. Especially our. Dispatchers, drivers, it's gonna make it so much easier on everybody.
Most, I guess, did you guys look at overall, was there a very good analysis on this as far as? Because a lot of these people are very financially, um, uh, uh, sort of looking, struggling here, um, strapped. I- is this about what they've maintained? Is this gonna be a, a decline or an increase?
It, it, it seems like actually when it comes to the revenue of what it's gonna bring in for us, we're probably gonna bring in less money. So therefore, it'd be overall, it'd be a, you know, in, an increase for the, for the drivers, I mean, excuse me, a decrease for the riders. And really, and it's really, we, we talked about this today, I was blown away by it. The revenue for, for our residents, for our county buses, actually only, Tim, you gave us that today, three point two percent.
Right.
Is actually from our fares, is, that's our total revenue for the transit. So it's a very small number. I mean, it is important, I mean, every dollar is important. But we feel that we would actually um bring in a, a little less revenue going this route.
I'm just concerned for the citizens, because they can't, can't, um, you know, this is part of their budget.
Yeah.
I- it is, our transportation, a hundred percent. I mean, we're getting ready to ask for a, a millage here too, so we don't wanna be upsetting.
Right, and we, and we talked about that. We feel that the majority of people will appreciate this, and that will help our fact, uh, our point with the millage. Um, but we do know that there will be a few people that um will disagree with it, but we feel that the majority will agree with it.
Commissioner Simmons.
Okay, another thing to, 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 you may wanna look at, the buses do come from West Branch. Go clear over there, and we were talking about anything over six miles is this, and anything less than six miles is this. So, but the buses do come from West Branch, to travel clear over here. You know, for us, that's why we base the four dollars over in this area that's the furthest away from, from here.
Yeah, it's not like we have a substation up in Rose City, or, I mean, everything's coming.
I just wanna make sure there's.
The majority of your riders are blue and yellow.
Yeah, they are.
I'd say just. I'd say just charge that medium rate for everybody across the board. Children are the same, uh, anywhere you go, they're a dollar. But a buck and a half, dollar and three, just wherever you're at, that's it, that's the price. My kids get on a school bus, doesn't matter how far they live from the school. We all pay the same.
Yeah, that's a matter, that's a good point.
They all, nobody charges, we don't charge more and more if you live farther away from school.
But this is a, this is a different, totally different program.
Okay, but people pay the mileage, I mean, I, 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 I kinda agree with what you just said.
Yeah, I think there's something to that.
I agree.
You want the simplest, easiest thing. And it just, that's what, it's three bucks to ride, or two fifty if you wanna go down, you've just gotta average it, and you average it all out.
I mean, I think it's good conversation, I mean, look what we just discussed. The revenue from our riders is three percent.
Yeah.
Not a lot of money, uh, so I think it's as good, this is good.
I think your biggest point is you wanna make it simple.
We wanna make it simple.
Simple, right.
For everybody.
And, and what we hear out there too is that certain parts of the area are, are, are favored. Oh, you know, um, I remember that specifically about Mills, about West Branch, and, and that takes the flat rate, anywhere in the county takes that away. I don't disagree with what you just said, Commissioner Scott.
I think your pink area is the lowest ridership, it's probably.
Oh, absolutely.
Twenty percent of the total ridership, so if you, if it, yeah, it could be less than that, so, so you're saying. They'll pay a little less, but there's a lot less of them. You're, the people that are gonna get hit on that averaging is gonna be in the blue, but. Basically, you know, that's really, that's cheap, I mean. And I'm a senior. So I'm charging myself more, but it's a, it's usually a buck and a half for them to come out.
What, what were you suggesting?
Just, just the yellow pricing.
For everybody.
Just give. Well, if we did that, I can tell you for sure, our revenue is going up. I mean, three dollars for everybody in the blue.
Yeah.
And the, the blue, though, is the majority of our drivers, so we are gonna, we will see a lot more disgruntled people by doing that. I can guarantee that.
A lot more disloyal.
I'm, I'm pretty used to.
But he's got a point, we're f- I mean, everybody's, everybody's voting for that mileage at the same rate.
And I, and I do understand that, I do, I'm, I'm just saying, that is the majority of our riders, and you're looking at a substantial increase for them. So, but I, I appreciate the conversation, and I do understand both the mileage. I mean, ultimately, it's our decision.
Commissioner Simmons, what are your thoughts?
I'd go back.
Yeah, when do you have to have this?
No, we don't have to, you don't have, no, we're, this, we're in conversation.
Okay.
So. It would be a significant difference, you know, it's three dollars for a dollar, so those running around West Branch, if that's what you're looking at, is that what you're looking at?
With one flat rate for the entire county.
Yeah, three bucks. Um. Dollar, dollar, two dollars. It's an average. Dollar, dollar, two dollars.
It's a little higher in the blue, but it's a little lower than everything else.
Take it back for further conversation.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what was the last one you say, you're saying, uh, two dollars? And then a dollar.
Dollar, dollar, two dollars, dollar, dollar, two dollars.
I say a dollar, a dollar fifty and two bucks.
Yeah, and you're cutting out the change.
I say a dollar, a dollar, two bucks too, if you wanna go that way.
Yeah, it cuts, it, it does.
Okay, we have our next meeting on, uh, Thursday, the twenty-first, so we'll talk about it.
Okay, item six, public comment. Any? Does your header, any public comment on the phone? They've hung in there. Item seven, closed session.
Oh.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Item seven, closed session for a strategy session connected with the negotiations for a collective bargaining agreement. There'll be, there'll be no business after the closed session.
I'll make the motion to go in the closed session on.
Thank you for coming on.
We have a motion. Scott.
I'll second.
Support for Commissioner Wiltie. Roll call vote.
Good night.
Roll call vote, oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at.
Uh, Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew. Charles Wiltie.
Yeah.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Greg Scott.
Motion to go on the closed session.
Is this first you work?
He should stay.
Yes.
And still should break.
Tom, you got everybody?
Already get them in the waiting room?
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Paul.
Want a little portion of me?
Have you addressed that with anybody?
You can open it, nobody's there.
Appreciate the savings, but I don't want you guys.
Only comes in at six and leaves at two.
So, I have a little secret in my office.
Air and heat still on.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to support adjourn at seven twenty-two, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Vote. Motion carries.
Good night, everyone.
My personal office is not that warm, I have cold running down my back, so I have a heater on all the time.
I have a heater in my office too.
Yeah.
I got sweaters.
But then when I leave, I go outside of my office.